Before we get started tonight, we have a lot of people that would like to speak this evening. So we're going to try to make some changes to accommodate everybody. For the time being, I'm going to open the meeting and we're going to get started. And then we will have some further guidance about how we're going to do this. I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Board of Trustees, Monday, August 2nd. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Hogan, will you take role, please?
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Protam Elliott.
Here.
Trustee Clark is noted absent. Trustee LeKind.
Here.
Trustee Romanello.
Here.
Trustee Stevens.
Here.
Trustee Anru.
Here.
Thank you. Before us, we have a consent agenda. I would like to modify that we move items four in place of item three. Switch the two. So resolutions will be item three and ordinances will be item four. Is there any questions or concerns with that from the board? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd like to do a discussion item on the comprehensive plan and the ordinances and why there's a discrepancy.
Okay.
It shouldn't take long.
So is that?
After, when, at the end, when we have, we don't have discussion items.
We don't have one on here, so we'll make it six and a half?
Yeah, that's fine.
Item six and a half, or six, six A? We'll make comprehensive plan discussion. Are there any other modifications? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Ms. Hogan?
Trustee Anru?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee LeKind?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Romanello?
Yes.
That motion passed six zero. So that makes the first item on our agenda, resolution. A public hearing on resolution number forty-five dash twenty-twenty-one. A resolution of the Town of Monument to approve a service plan for Conexus Commercial Metropolitan District. Ms. Harrington?
Good evening, Mayor. Trustee members, Megan Harrington, Planning Director. So the staff, hopefully everybody can hear me now. Staff and the applicant realize that the volume of people here, we are unable to fit everyone into chambers so that they can have their voices heard. What we would like to do is ask that the board continue the hearing until August sixteenth. That gives the town and the applicant time to find a larger venue that can hold all of the citizens that would like to comment before we continue on with the public hearing.
Okay. We do have many people in the hall that are wanting to participate and be heard. So this... We're at capacity currently.
And there are folks outside as well.
So, board members? Suggestions, comments?
It seems they all want to stay.
There's, there's, there's a hundred and fifty people outside that want, that have suggested that we postpone this to the sixteenth because they would like to be here in the room during all of this discussions. And so they've asked us to get a larger venue so that all of these people here and all the people outside have the same opportunity to be here for all the comments.
Okay. We wouldn't vote on this item. It's a public hearing item. I suggest that we postpone it and find a larger venue. We will still have our public comment items on the agenda. So if someone would like to make comment on the record, they can do it during the public comment item, which would not be part of the hearing portion, but they would still be allowed to make public comment. It will be on the record. Correct. Correct. Yes. That would be item five of eight. I, I think we'll find, we'll try to, we will try to find the largest venue we can. And then we will, if we end up still needing more room, we will ask people to shuffle in and out during their turns. Okay? So... I think our best option is to go to the biggest venue we can and we'll try to deal with those items if they come up. We want everybody to participate. The developer agrees that they want everybody to participate. So... We'll, we'll have to form some sort of online participation. Or... Okay. We will have to... And I, I believe the board is... I believe the board would, in spite of COVID, be willing to hear everybody out. If we need to do a larger venue and have people take turns coming in, we will still, you know, we can socially distance, whatever. But our goal here is to allow everybody to be heard. And we'll, we're trying to accommodate everybody currently. Is it scheduled for the sixteenth?
If you make a motion to continue the hearing to the sixteenth, then the item would be heard on the sixteenth. That is to be determined as soon as we can find a large venue. How does the message get out? So we will use all of our social media, our website. We have an email list of everyone that's contacted staff, concerned citizens. We'll email them and then we're going to rely a lot on word of mouth from all of you to push the message out. So any venue or any avenue that we can, from a staff perspective, we would use to get the word out on the where of the hearing.
As, as I already mentioned, I believe the board would agree with that and be willing to do that.
I agree with that.
Sure.
Does, does the, does the board agree that this will be held in person no matter current guidelines that may come up?
Agreed.
Yes.
Agreed.
Okay. So we will hold this item, the public hearing item, open and hold it over until the sixteenth? Mr. Howe? Ms... We will, we will... Tap... Town staff? Town staff, I believe it is the board's direction for you to find a venue, if not big red, one of the high school auditoriums.
We have staff working on that right now.
Okay. So do we have a motion to hold this item open?
I move to hold this item open until the sixteenth.
Uh, can you motion the?
Yeah, I, I move to keep the public hearing on, we're doing both resolutions on four for this?
No, just A.
Just A, that's what I thought. Public hearing on resolution number forty-five twenty-twenty-one, a resolution of the Town of Monument to approve the service plan for the Conexus Commercial Metropolitan District and to be done in person.
That's why we are opening the item and holding it over. That's why we're holding the item open. So the item is currently open. It will remain open until August sixteenth. So it's, in a sense, it's the same hearing. No decisions will be made.
I second the motion.
We have a motion, a second. Ms. Hogan, will you take role?
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee LeKind?
Yes.
Trustee Anru?
Yes.
Trustee Romanello?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes. That item, or that motion passes six zero. That item will be held, held over till the sixteenth. That takes us to item four B. We have other things on the agenda, that particular item. Do you plan on leaving? We will... We will... We will take a five-minute recess and then continue with the board meeting. We do have a clarification to make. During the regular comment period, none of the comments that apply to the public hearing are going, will be allowed for the board to address as part of the public hearing. It has to be separate. We just clarified this with our town attorney. Mr. Rishi, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yes. Due to the state law requirements on the public hearing, once the hearing is open, all the, all of the public comment related to it in order to be considered needs to be done during the pendency of that hearing. And so, public comment right now cannot be considered for any purpose related to the decision at the hearing. So every, all the public comment, everything has to be flowed through that one hearing in that one venue.
So to clarify, if you're here to make public comment on that item during our regular public comment period, it will not, the board will not be allowed to use it as evidence. With that, we will continue our meeting. Resolution four B, public hearing on resolution number four-six dash twenty-twenty-one, a resolution of the Town of Monument to approve the service plan for Monument Junction Metropolitan District. Ms. Harrington?
Good evening again, Mayor. Trustee members. For the record, Megan Harrington, Planning Director. For your consideration this evening is the service plan for the Monument Junction Metropolitan District's numbers one and two. The property in question here has been before the board as the village. However, this is the Monument Junction's Metropolitan District, which is covering that developable area. It is eighty-three-plus acres, currently zoned PUD, which is Planned Unit Development. Realizing that we just had the implementation of the new code on July sixteenth, this was originally zoned PD, now PUD, but that did not change any of the permitted uses on this site. This is located just south of Highway one oh five and on the east and west side of Jackson Creek Parkway. Just a bit of history, again, the Metro District Service Plan is completely separate from land use. But I think it's important for you just to know where, where the property stands now as far as zoning and what has been approved for entitlements to date. So from our records, I show that in the mid-eighties, the property was owned of planned commercial development as part of Regency Park. And then in June of twenty-twenty, the Board of Trustees approved a rezoning to PUD, which is now PUD, along with a sketch plan for the entire eighty-three-plus acres. And that sketch plan doesn't show specific building layout. It just shows general permitted uses. And for this sketch plan, the uses are commercial office, mixed-use, multifamily residential, single-family residential, civic services, parks and open space. That sketch plan is just laying out all of the possible uses that could be permitted on the site with future site plan approvals. Now, that's the existing land use. There's been no other land use that's come before you. And again, the Metro District Service Plan is separate from the land use. And the Title thirty-two district is enabled by state statute. And just to define what the district is, there's many definitions, but the simplest that I found was financing mechanism used for the installation, operation and maintenance of public infrastructure. So really what you're being asked to do is, the ask is to approve the service plan that establishes how the public infrastructure will be paid for. And again, I'm going to leave a lot of the financing information, explanation of the mill levy operation and maintenance. I'm going to leave that to the developer. But I just wanted to kind of lay out from staff perspective what we're looking at when we're making a recommendation to you on the service plan. Now, that service plan again sets that mill levy and the debt cap for those improvements that, that that district will be responsible for. And any changes to what is in that service plan that's before you tonight need to come back before the board. So any change to a mill levy, any change to the cap of the debt, that all would come before the board for any changes to that. And again, that district service plan is completely separate from the land use action. When staff reviews the service plan, we're looking at the existing zone district. It's PUD. It's PUD and the sketch plan. The sketch plan contemplates some type of commercial and residential use on the site. And we know that in the future, with that development, there will be infrastructure needs. And this is the mechanism for financing those future needs. State statute sets out four requirements for approving the service plan. Those again are in your packet, and I will bring those up on the screen. As part of the resolution, staff has recommended placing conditions, and those conditions are in that resolution, maximum mill levy, maximum debt, and provide notice to purchasers. There is another condition that was added, and it is condition number five. It states that approval of the service plan does not imply approval of the development of any specific portion of the property. So again, that is just to reaffirm that the service plan resolution and the service plan approval is completely separate from any land use, and it doesn't bind the Board of Trustees to any land use approval. These on the screen, those are the four findings established in state statute that the Board of Trustees would need to find in order to approve a service plan. And then just one small technical issue. I made an error in the resolution, which I'm hoping you'll forgive me. In the resolution under the conditions, it states that the maximum cap of the mill levy is fifty mils. It's actually sixty mils with a ten mil operation and maintenance. So where the ordinance, excuse me, where the resolution says fifty maximum, it should be sixty because that incorporates the ten mils of operation and maintenance. And we will make that adjustment. If this moves forward, if the board moves to approve the resolution, we will make that change before signatures. But that is all documented correctly in your board memo. And staff is available for any questions, but we obviously are going to make sure that we turn that over to the applicant to give you specific details on the financing.
So just a clarification, because I think it's pertinent to tonight, developing the service plan and the district or approving the service plan, the district usually happens in spite of whatever may come in the future. This does not approve any specific development.
Correct. You already have an approved sketch plan that generally shows what the land use will be, but this does not bind any future land use approval. And again, staff wanted to ensure that that was understood, and we put those as conditions in that resolution that if the board chooses to approve, would specifically state that it is not that the service plan approval does not bind to any land use actions in the future. And so that's why we added that stipulation under conditions of approval in that resolution. So staff will evaluate all land use items completely separate and aside from the service plan. And when any land use items come in in the future, we will use those criteria from town code in order to make those approvals, depending on what application is submitted.
Okay. Is there other questions from the board for staff before we get to the applicant? Seeing none, we'll go ahead with the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of trustees. Appreciate the time tonight. Wasn't expecting quite the welcome we received. Want to start out by reiterating the purpose of the district. And as Ms. Harrington pointed to, it's really a tool, and I'll give a little bit of historical background. When Colorado approved the Tabor Constitutional Amendment, prior to that, most jurisdictions in the state of Colorado, the cities, the towns, the counties, built the infrastructure for new housing developments, new commercial developments and everything else. With Tabor, all of that financing for that infrastructure and those improvements had to be voted on individually or by the entire community to build any new improvements to facilitate development. Well, what that ended up was basically creating a stalemate because most people aren't going to vote to spend millions of dollars as an entire jurisdiction to put in the improvements for a new development. So what came out of that back in nineteen sixty-eight and started in nineteen sixty-eight, but was refined in the late nineties as a result of Tabor, is the metropolitan districts that you see today. And what those districts do is they are a tool as the beginning part of a capital stack that's required to build the improvements to facilitate either a new residential or a new commercial or industrial type development. With the costs for public improvements and without the participation of communities as a whole, or cities or counties, this is a very necessary tool to help get those projects over the goal line by providing low-cost, tax-exempt financing as a resource to make these things happen. I'll just quickly go through the presentation that we have. I don't want to spend a ton of time on it because I know you have a lot of questions, but here's an overall view of the project. Just showing generally where it is, as Ms. Harrington said, south of 105, east of I-25. Next slide. And here's the conceptual layout for how the project could potentially be. As was stated, there is a sketch plan in place for this, but it's still being refined and is still subject to land use approvals. Next one. All right, here, here's where we get to the meat of why we're here. As you can see, for this relatively small eighty-plus acre development, the public improvement costs that are required to be funded are nearly twelve million dollars for the streets, two point two for the storm drainage, seven and a half for the water, almost a million for sanitary sewer, and almost four million dollars for parks, recreation, playgrounds, monumentation and landscaping. Those are significant costs, and those don't even start the first building. So that's just to get the infrastructure in place to facilitate any type of development at all. And that's what the role of the Metropolitan District is, is formed through this service plan process. We then go to court, court orders an election, hold an election that authorizes under Tabor, these amounts to be spent by the Metropolitan District through bonding to finance this infrastructure. And that is the role of the Metropolitan District in this type of situation and ongoing. There may be some landscaping that's maintained by the district, things of that nature, but it is strictly or mostly for the purpose of financing the infrastructure. Next, please. And the financing plan in in the service plan, as you know, I'm sure you've all read the details of the service plan. It is very lengthy. There's a detailed financing plan in there from a well-known underwriter in the state of Colorado that deals with public finance. And one of the criteria for them to look at is if the district develops the way it is, what kind of bonding capacity can it support? And it's very important to note that just like a home mortgage, anything else, you can get pre-qualified for a million dollars, but if if you don't have a job that will support through your income, that type of a loan, you're not going to get it. And that's ultimately, when we go to the market to issue bonds, the underwriters and the bond buyers are going to look at this at the actual approved development. They're going to look at what's on the ground, and they're going to say, well, based on the mill levies in the service plan, which is our cap, and based on the market and what's going on out there, this is all that you're going to be able to borrow. And they are extremely conservative. They require a one point two five generally coverage ratio, which is is very conservative in the market. So what we're proposing in the service plan is a combined mill levy of sixty mils, debt mill levy of up to fifty mils, and an O and M of ten mils. And those are all subject to, again, that market. And then the max debt authorization is thirty-seven million. As you saw before, we have upper twenty million in improvement costs. This just gives us a little bit of extra in case, as we've seen in the last five years, construction and costs go through the roof. It's good to have that extra so that we don't have to worry about coming back and amending it. The maturity period, so from the day that debt is issued and the mill levy is imposed, it can't go beyond forty years. Actual bond terms are thirty years, but again, the market likes to have that extra coverage. So in case there is an issue and we need to go to thirty-one years, we have that ability to do so. That is all I've got as far as information, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I also have Nate Lenz from the development team here to answer any questions, as well as Doug Stimple, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. As as we get started with board questions before we get to the public hearing, I see in here you have streets of almost twelve million. Mike, how does that work with with the town? What does that do for the town as far as saving costs on building and developing roads? I mean, what does that twelve million include?
So the twelve million includes about, and correct me if I'm wrong, but about three point five million dollars in Jackson Creek Parkway improvements. That's based on the estimate from the traffic study. That includes an intersection at 105 and Jackson Creek. It includes onsite collector signals, I think two of those, and their their estimate from their traffic study of their proportion of Jackson Creek Parkway improvements.
So that would further go on in our efforts to expand Jackson Creek and finish it off?
Currently, we are, we need to expand Jackson Creek Parkway from Higbee to 105. And currently, we've been granted about, I think it's one point nine million dollars to be able to do that. And so part of that match that we have, our requirement will be paid from this also. We'll have, this will be about, when you add all this up, probably about five point five million of ten million. We'll, we'll be looking for about four to four point five million dollars to complete the entire project.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Yes, I have a few questions. You said that there would be an election to vote on this. Since this is a residential area that's not yet been developed, who votes in that election?
The election will be held amongst the qualified electors who are, at this point, the developers. And I, and I do want to point out that nobody lives lives in this area. So before anyone buys a house, before anyone leases a property for a business, before anyone buys a property to establish a business, they will be fully aware of that. And I want to point you as well to Senate Bill two ninety-two that was passed this just this year, became effective July first, which requires every metropolitan district formed after the year two thousand to file very specific disclosures and have those recorded against the property so that anyone buying a property within those district limits has every bit of information they need regarding the metropolitan district, including when the elections are, when or how much the taxes are exactly going to be for this level of house, and the other implications for the district. And it also includes into the future, for any future elections, that the notices to residents would be enhanced.
Okay. The next question I have, you said the maturity of the bond will be at forty years. Will the mill levy at that point be terminated after the forty year and the bond is paid off?
And just to clarify, the term of the bond is thirty years, and they just have a forty-year mill levy term on there so that in case, for whatever reason, an oh eight happens in year two, there's the ability to push it out a year to recover from something like that. So it's a thirty-year timeframe, but it could go to forty and under certain specific circumstances.
Okay. And what happens to the Metropolitan District once everything is paid off and done?
Good question. So when the bonds are paid off, and assuming there are no other obligations of the district, the district can dissolve, or it can be combined with another district if if that's possible. But the statute is very specific, so if all we do is use it for the issuance of bonds, when those bonds are paid off, it's dissolved and the mill levy goes away.
Okay. You have a ten, ten mil out of sixty, which is a sixteen percent for operational funds. My understanding is you're not providing water. That's done by Woodmore.
Correct.
You're not doing any street maintenance, are you?
No.
Okay. So what are you doing as part of the operational cost?
Well, operations is a fairly large category, and that includes, like I said, any open space maintenance, if there's trails, landscaping, playgrounds, parks. Those are usually the biggest ticket items for a district to maintain. And then we usually say it takes about one to two mils just to keep the district operating. There, there are extensive state filings that are required. There's audits, there's budgets, elections, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, one of trustee Stevens' questions, after people start moving into the district or after somebody starts leasing a commercial property in the district, when is the next election? Because we all live in metro districts where we have a metro district board. It's not uncommon. When does that take place once something is built for a resident to be part of that board?
Sure. This is going to get a little confusing because they changed the state law on me. It used to be May of every even year, so twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. Because the clerk and recorders got really busy on those years, they've now are shifting it over to twenty twenty-three, and it'll be every two years on the odd numbered years now going forward. So the the minute someone buys a property in a district, they at the next election can put in a nomination form, and they're on the ballot to be voted.
And so it doesn't matter if they're the even the only residents there.
Correct.
If they're on the ballot and there's two seats open, they get a seat.
If they're the only people, they're correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions from the board before I open the public hearing?
I've got a question. So if these estimates for your twenty-six million in public improvements are low after the service plan is approved, how are you going to make the difference up? How will it be funded?
That's a very good question. And and that addresses kind of a misconception about metropolitan districts, that they're just a free ride. Metropolitan districts generally cover fifty to maybe fifty-five, sixty percent of the public improvement costs. Everything else is paid for directly by the developer to make sure those are caught, those are covered. They're required by all jurisdictions as part of the land use approval. So any shortfall between what the district's financing can do and what the total cost is, is borne by the developer.
So that will be something that be in an agreement between the town through, what is it called?
PI, Public Improvement.
You'll, you will be signing a statement to that fact that the developer will, because I have to admit, I find sixty mils offensive and quite disgusting. I live in an area right next door, joining, where the developer decided to put fifty mils on us for the next four decades. And I was not disclosed to me at closing when I moved here. A hundred and thirty-seven mils for for a home? It's a lot. You're talking, and well, how did you come to this number besides the twenty-six million? How did you get to this sixty mils? I get the ten, I get the ten mils because you've got operations and maintenance, but the other fifty, how did you come to that?
I'm going to let Doug Stimple answer that.
Good evening, Doug Stimple, CEO and one of the principals of Classic Homes. Those are fair questions, and and I want to clarify a couple of points. Number one, this is a free market. If you don't want to pay the mils, don't move into the neighborhood. Number two, I mean, it's, it's just, it's the way it works. It will be fully disclosed upfront, and and I understand your reticence to have the mils. That is what we are asking for. It doesn't mean that's exactly what we will certify. We have to stay market competitive. But if you look around in this area, we have Triview, and we have Triview two in Promontory. We have Triview, and we have Triview four in Sanctuary. We have Triview, and we have whatever the replacement for Triview three is in Home Place Ranch. Triview's about thirty-five mils. Those others are fifteen. They're at fifty. The reason for ours is because we have such a significant contribution to Jackson Creek Parkway. We have to buy six million dollars worth of water from Woodmore Water and Sand. We have significant trails, and we're actually trying to develop a detention pond that is twice the size of normal so that we can a detention pond that is twice the size of normal so that we can actually program it as a park instead of just having land that is wasted in use to only serve to detain water. We have been working with the town and with our engineering firm to create something that is actually a community amenity. So we need an ongoing mill levy to assist with the the upfront and ongoing maintenance costs of that. The dollar amounts that Russ estimated, I think he's high. Our experience has been that typically districts pay for about thirty percent of all infrastructure. To your point, how do we guarantee the payment of the rest? We actually have to put up a bond for it. We actually have to bond it. So the day we start, if we have infrastructure dollars from the district of X and it costs Y, we bond that differential so that there's a guarantee from a certified insured bonded company that the development can get put on the ground. One hundred percent of the risk of all of this is on the bond holders. There is no recourse for the bond holders except to collect property taxes. They can't foreclose on property. They can't do any other thing except collect mill levies. And so they have to underwrite what do they think our absorption will be? What do they think our pricing will be? Of course, we provide them that data. We've done thirteen or fourteen over the last thirty years of our existence and every single district has worked very, very well. And part of that is because I believe we are always proper in our estimating. And I want to point out, this money can't be spent for anything. It can only be spent for what is by state definition, a qualified and eligible public expense. They are audited, they are certified by an independent third party and they're an appropriate financing tool. So while I respect, sir, that you might not want to live in a community that has sixty mils, number one, there's no guarantee it will. Number two, respectfully, don't choose to live there. And because it'll all be disclosed to you upfront, no different than it is in Sanctuary Point, no different than it was in Promontory Point. And long before state statute required it, we have been giving that disclosure upfront. And we say, if you own a four hundred thousand dollar home, this is the incremental cost that this district will cost you year in and year out until the bonds are retired. If you own a five hundred thousand dollar home, this is the incremental cost. We go above and beyond to disclose it. We believe that what happens with districts is you get a higher quality development than you would otherwise get because you can afford to do things in a nice manner. We can afford to put in potentially a park instead of just a detention pond. We can afford to do nice landscaping. I would just point out Promontory and Sanctuary is two prime examples. The classic is done. So I I would, I would bring those to your attention, respectfully submit that this is a market driven approach and what we're asking for is a financing tool that left to their own devices. When you have to pay four or five million dollars to the contribution of Jackson Creek Parkway, realize what we're doing. We are putting down curb and gutter, asphalt and wet utilities and we are deeding it to the town of Monument. It doesn't have any financeability. How do I borrow against that? How do I borrow against an asset that I build that I then convey to the town? No bank loans against that. So the only thing we can borrow against is what the development costs are on the lots. And we put substantial equity in. The financing tool allows us to make that contribution to significant public infrastructure that's needed and appropriate. And these are tools that have been put in place so that it alleviates towns and municipalities from having to pay for infrastructure where our project will only represent fifteen percent, ten percent, twelve percent of the traffic on Jackson Creek Parkway. But we get the privilege of paying for a very significant portion of it. This is a financing tool that's been put in place in recognition of that fact. Does that make sense?
Yes, and Mr. Stimple, I appreciate the explanation. This was not a personal stab at you.
Oh, didn't take it.
Okay, because I don't like the state's guidelines on metro, the fact that metro districts can be formed and it's taken the power out of the developer and the municipality from working together to create the infrastructure. I I think the whole thing is obscene.
And respectfully, I would disagree. I think in fact it provides a tool for the developer and the town to work together to provide infrastructure.
Under taper. Under taper.
And and even without taper, it it provides a tool for 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 developers and municipalities to work together. And and again, I'm not trying to change your mind, sir. I I'm only here to try and there there's a misperception about what districts are and it isn't anything other. And what they do on the front end, when you fast forward, if you have to put all those costs on your first lot, the the cost of your lots are very large. When you're able to finance it over thirty or forty years, what that does, not to get technical, but it takes it out of cost of goods sold and and you don't have to charge as much for your lots. You're able to say, I'm going to get a contribution from our district of plus minus, in this example, thirty million dollars. Rather than having to recoup that out of the cost of my lots, I can take that thirty million dollars and I can put that out off here as an off balance sheet financing mechanism. And now I don't have to charge as much for my lots. It actually is a tool that creates the ability to have much more affordable lots and affordable is a tough term in today's world where the average house costs five hundred thousand dollars. But if you had to add those costs into the price of the lot, I mean, the average house might be eight hundred thousand dollars and 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 I would submit that that's not a good thing. We're in, we're in the throes of of having way more demand than we have supply nationwide. That's because we've underbuilt the market for the last ten years and we have the, we don't have labor supply, we don't have the supply chain and we don't have the ability to catch up. And this is on us for a while until the millennials go through the system. And it's no different than the baby boomers thirty years ago. So this is a tool that actually makes homes more affordable, more attainable, I think is a better word. And I think it's a very appropriate tool and I think it allows us to work together better as opposed to not, as opposed to what your perception of it is.
Yes, you mentioned that, uh, Mr., I think trustee Lacine, part of his concern was that the mill levy was not disclosed to him. He said that you plan on doing that. Is that in the, I'll ask our attorney, do you know if that's in the service plan where it's actually specified?
As was indicated earlier, it's actually part of state law. It's been updated to be required under state law that they have to make disclosures to people when they sell the homes and you should be may having those disclosures upfront.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Not a question, but just a a comment to make clear that there is two districts here, one and two, because you're keeping the commercial and residential entirely separate.
That's correct, sir.
That's all I wanted to clarify.
That's correct.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing portion of this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak against Resolution number forty six, twenty twenty one, Service Plan for Monument Junction Metropolitan District? Ms. Kinsley? Yes, please come up and state your name. Oh, yeah, I think there's a sign in up there.
My name is Jennifer Nysley. I'm signing in. My question's for the attorney. I was wondering if you have thoroughly reserved, reviewed the service plan and all the organizational papers for the metro district?
Steph has completed a thorough review of the documentation.
Who is the metro district attorney, please? Thank you. Who are the officers? They're required to own property in the metro district. So parcels have to be owned by the officers. Is that requirement met or will be met? Yes, it is. And the deed to the metro district, the director's parcel has to hold value and the value needs to be public record. Local resident of owner needs to appoint board members that reside inside of Monument. Has that requirement been met? It is a requirement. Okay, so members of Classic will own different parts of this and they will be on the board of the metro district, which is self taxing, autonomous, has no town oversight. Does the service plan include the right of the metro district to have eminent domain? And when would that town approval be sought? Okay. And from what I understand, we're four million dollars short from covering the cost of the the road improvement. Did I understand that? I understand that, that what I'm asking specifically is the roads, the roads, the infrastructure needed for the roads and any improvement of the roads. Oh, I don't understand the financing plan. Okay, let me write that down. I don't understand the financing. Okay, so what I understood being said was that your service plan does not cover the entirety of the road infrastructure improvements that will be needed. Okay, who are these other property owners? Okay, sir, I'll look that up. Thanks. Right. Right. And also I understand that usually developer has to put down a rather large bond, correct? What is the, is the bond in the form of a promissory note? Is what is it in the form of? Because I remember in two thousand seventeen where we let a developer, they had a promissory note and that bond expired. The town never acted upon it and never got the cash for it. Then a metro district was formed and taxes were collected to make up the difference. So how will the bond be collected exactly from the developer? Philadelphia. And there will be an expiration date on that bond for which they can call upon it because the town in two thousand seventeen let that expire. Okay. Okay, I also represent clients, I'm a Realtor and I represent clients who went under contract on a classic home in Jackson Creek in March. They had to sign a change order that all their parks and open spaces would be eliminated. I can present the change order, sir. I'll post the public change order. They signed saying the parks would be eliminated and houses could potentially be built there, sir. I have the change order. They signed it. They also were told if they didn't sign it, that those homes would be put back on the market and sold at a higher price to someone else because of the high demand and low inventory.
Mr. Stimple, please hold. Please make your comments and then they will. And they will have an opportunity to rebuttal. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the applicant for rebuttal. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Will you let me know when they're ready? Okay, Ms. Bullyard, if you would like to make a comment on this item, please do. This is service agreement for Monument Junction Metropolitan District. Go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to respond to Mr. Stimple's comment about this being a free market and I think what he's referring to is that the rich get richer and the rest of us actually have to pay taxes. I'd like to know exactly how prospective homeowners are made aware of the mills.
Okay. The the applicant will rebuttal after public comments are finished.
My other comment, I would simply say that I would not use Sanctuary Point as an example, is there are many homeowners here that are not pleased with the developer's lack of maintenance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, do we have any other comments online? Okay, do we have anyone else here in person that would like to make comment on this?
Apologize if I'm ignorant for asking them. But I live in a neighborhood close to the development that you're speaking to. And I was just wondering, as a person who owns a home in a neighborhood, if I would have any say on how your development goes, if you do keep the parks, if you do keep the open spaces and how your development would affect my neighborhood.
So that will be addressed in the applicant's rebuttal.
Oh, okay, all right. And also, if there are any meetings, any meetings that would be coming up where people in my neighborhood, my neighbors, millennials who are in my neighborhood worried about our home values, if we have any say and if we can be a part of the decision making process. Bryn Kona.
Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion of this resolution and allow the applicant to respond.
Thank you. Bryn, I'll start with you. First of all, the, yes, there is a public process that is involved when we go through and take it from where it's currently, it's got a sketch plan and zoning and it shows uses. And then we are going to make an application to the town. Right now, what we're planning on, so think of Jackson, Jackson Creek Parkway kind of divides the property north to south. There's roughly half on the east and half on the west. We're ready to make a formal application for land use approval on the east side. What will happen is we will make that application, the town will review it, they will tell us to meet with the interested stakeholders. And please don't make any mistake, I have two millennials myself and I'm glad you're getting into the housing market. And we want to meet with you. We will give you an opportunity to comment on our plan and we will take into consideration comments. And and frankly, what we have done is we we believe that we have taken over our course of our history, we've taken all reasonable comments and tried to accommodate them. If the comment is, we don't want anyone to live here, that's really tough for us to deal with because we come at it from such a philosophical difference. If the comment is, hey, we'd like a little buffer here, maybe a trail, access to one of your parks, those are all very reasonable comments that we will take that into consideration and we will work with you on. We also have to take a lot of drainage flow from the adjacent area and we're taking that into consideration from an engineering standpoint. So that is completely separate and distinct from this process. And yes, we will work with you. That was at least one of your questions. And your second question, I'm sorry. That is a, that is a, that is a town of monument criteria. You will be getting a postcard. We will be holding meetings and we will say, you are invited to. And then we will unveil our plan, walk you through it and elicit comments. And and I'm not a hundred percent certain, but if you will email me at D Stimple, just D Stimple at classichomes.com, I will make sure you get notified. I will personally make sure of it. And then relative to the comment about Sanctuary, once we build, once we complete our development obligations, we turn things over to the district for maintenance. In Sanctuary, we've turned the park over for maintenance. We turn the trails over, et cetera, just like we do the roads. And while there may be some residents that are unhappy, I submit that generally, I think Triview has done a very good job and I believe under Mr. McGrady's stewardship, Triview has made leaps and bounds to the extent that anyone is unhappy with the maintenance level of existing infrastructure, then that is really a Triview issue, not a Classic Homes issue. And I believe that was everything. What's that? Oh, on the notice, how will they be notified? Fair question. We have always done it in the contract. Oh, on the notice, how will they be notified? Fair question. We have always done it in the contract. Specifically, we've always done it that way. But now there's a state statute that we are going to have to comply with. And that state statute is very specific about what the notice requires. And frankly, if you look at what the state statute requires and you look what we've always done, it's actually, we won't have to change our business practice whatsoever. We just have to make it a little more, we have to make it compliant with state statute, which is essentially by bolding certain letters and stuff like that. But that'll be all done in compliance with state statute. And any other questions? Because that's all I have.
I'll bring it back to the board for questions for the applicant or staff. Trustee Romanello?
I think that our staff can answer the notice issue, right? How many, how close of a radius that sent out?
I'll let Megan address that.
Trustee members, the town code states that 500 feet, so any property owner within a 500-foot distance from the property line itself is noticed. And then as part of that process, there's a poster placed on site as well, a sign notifying of public hearings, neighborhood meeting that might be held.
And that, that property notice, that I believe that, that would be a question for another meeting. It's very possible. And that includes even vacant property?
Correct. We would use the El Paso County assessor's records. We rely on the applicant property owner to do a search of the El Paso County assessor's records and it goes to the owners. Even if the property is vacant, there is an address where the tax bill goes and that is the address where a letter would go notifying of a neighborhood meeting and public hearings once an application is submitted.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions from the board? Public hearing time is over. I'm sorry. Ms. Harrington, can you bring up the slide with the requirements for approval or disapproval? And I believe you said you also had modifications or changes? Oh, conditions?
Yes, Mayor, give me one second here. So on your screen now are the findings established in state statute that the Board of Trustees would need to make in approving a resolution authorizing the service plan. And these again are specifically from state statute that there is sufficient existing projected need for the organized service in the area. The existing service plan in the area to be served by the district is not adequate for present or projected needs. The proposed district is capable of providing economic insufficient service to the area within the boundaries. And the area to be included in the proposed special district has or will have financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness on a reasonable basis. So those are the findings. Again, in your, in the resolution, those findings are incorporated. And then the change to the resolution is if you approve the resolution, in the resolution, it states that there's a total combined 50 mills. Whereas this evening you heard that that is a total combined 60 mills, 50, and then 10 for operation and maintenance.
And before we continue on, Mr. Foreman, can you elaborate on how Jackson Creek gets widened and the shortfall in finances that is ultimately the town's responsibility? How does that work?
So currently, Jackson Creek's two lanes from Higbee to 105. We are currently under a contract to do a design for the widening of Jackson Creek Parkway, as you're aware of. In the last two years, Tribe View has widened Jackson Creek Parkway going south from Higbee Road all the way to, well, it goes all the way to Baptist Road. And so we would like to match that up from Higbee all the way to 105. That cost we're estimating today and we won't know until the design's completed, but we estimate that it'll be about $10 million. And so currently we have about $2 million funded by PPACG. And then we are expecting somewhere in the neighborhood of $3.5 million from this project. So that would put us about $4.5 million short of our estimated cost.
So, but whose responsibility is that?
The Town of Monument.
So
if there are developers along Jackson Creek Parkway who come to develop, we will enter into a PIA, a public improvement agreement with them also to help share that cost.
And that's the plan for this development is that 3 million is coming from an agreement with them?
Exactly. It will be a future agreement that we do before they start the project.
We're short how much? We should put an easy pass toll lane in.
That was my idea on Baptist Road.
What, do we have other developers looking to develop in that area?
We don't currently, sir.
It's just vacant property?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? With that, I'll look for a motion.
Yeah, I think this will be an added improvement to our, especially that 105 intersection. My understanding is that we are going to expand that and make that into, you know, is that will be part of the process, correct? Yes, sir. We are, the part of the design process will address the issues that we have at 105 and Jackson Creek Parkway. I think everybody that goes through that area sees that it's a, you know, a stressful area there. And so our design will address that. I don't know what the solution is right now, but we're going to let the designer show us what that solution is.
If it's slippery in the wind, I can tell you that.
Oh, yes. It's quite the great, even in our trunks. So I think these are needed improvements for us and we don't have any good way of paying for it right now. So I move Resolution Number 46-2021, a resolution of the Town of Monument to approve the service plan for Monument Junction Metropolitan Number One and Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Hogan?
Trustee LaKind?
Yes.
Trustee Unruh?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Romanello?
Yes.
That motion passes 6-0. That takes us back to the original Item 3, Ordinance Number 35-2021, an ordinance approving the exchange of real property located at Beacon Light Road. Mr. Ricci?
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. The Board of Trustees has previously authorized the redrilling of Well 3. The state permit for Well 3 required the redrill of the well to be located within 200 feet of the original well. Due to the presence of buried utility lines running the length of the parcel upon which Well 3 is located, the redrill needed to occur south and west of its current location on another parcel not owned by the town. The owner of an adjacent parcel, Porchlight Properties, consented through an easement to allow the redrill of Well 3 on the east edge of the property. Porchlight Properties desires to have the town own the land upon which Well 3 is now located and also desires to own road frontage along Beacon Light Road. The current owner has an easement across the town land but does not have road frontage that is owned by that lot. And so they are, they are landlocked with an easement. So they would like actual road frontage. So Ordinance 35-2021 authorizes the purchase of land upon which Well 3 is located through the exchange of town property along Beacon Light Road as outlined in Exhibit A to the ordinance. Town staff believes that the two parcels in question will be of the most benefit and value to the parties that will own them after the sale is authorized. The sale of town property also includes a utility access and maintenance easement. This easement will allow the town to continue using the parcel being sold to Porchlight Properties for utilities, access, and maintenance of Well 3. The fiscal impact here is that no town funds will be spent to purchase either property. The purchase is of an even in-kind exchange nature. The town should however benefit from the sale in that Porchlight Properties lot will have owned road access and therefore be more valuable to the town through future development of the now vacant lot. Staff recommends approval of Ordinance 35-2021.
So this is, you know, I have a slide that shows this property. This is
This is page 14 of your board packet. It shows where, exactly where it is.
I meant.
Oh, sorry. No.
So this is the vacant property between Arlene's Beans and the retirement, Bethesda Retirement. It just had all the drilling on it.
That is correct.
On the west side of 105.
Yes. It's crossed, it's crossed at the south end by the trail where the trail crosses Beacon Light Road.
And you said it's even money?
Even, even money. We are exchanging Track A on the exhibit for the gray area on the exhibit showing the road frontage.
Okay. Questions from the, there's no applicant here for this item?
No.
Okay. Questions from the board for town staff? Seeing none at this time, this is a public hearing item. Would anyone like to speak for or against the exchange of real property Ordinance Number 35-2021? Mr. Anderson, do we have anyone online? Okay. I will leave the public hearing portion open momentarily and bring it back to the board for any further discussion. That well is complete, correct, Mr. Tharnish?
Mr. Mayor, the, the well has completed construction and outfitting with the piping screens and everything downhole. The only thing we're waiting for now is the new pump and motor to, and the piping to go back in. We're specing that within the next month.
And this property is sufficient for access for you for future maintenance?
Yes.
And you said it would be about a month because I know we've been on very tight water restrictions this summer because of, we had two wells down, the well number seven, which is the radon issue, and then the one you got now.
Yes, actually, the only well that's out of service right now is well number nine, which is our radium producing well. That should be back online in, towards the end of the year. Right now, they're still on schedule, so that's a good thing. We did bring on our newest well, well number 10, last week. So it's producing very good and I think today was the first day that we actually filled the tank almost to the overflow point. So we're a lot better shape than we were three weeks ago.
Thank you. Okay, if no one would like to speak to this item, I will close the public hearing portion of this and bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 35-2021, an ordinance approving the exchange of real property located on Beacon Light Road, Monument Colorado, and providing other details regarding the financing of the purchase.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Hogan?
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Romanello?
Yes.
Trustee LaKind?
Yes.
Trustee Unruh?
Yes.
That motion passes 6-0. I believe this takes us to public comment period for items not on the agenda. Like I mentioned earlier, if you would like to comment on Resolution Number 45-2021, it will not be considered in the hearing on the 16th. Would anybody like to make public comment at this time? Mr. Stimple?
That beautiful bald head.
And just a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes.
I'll try. Good evening. Just three comments to make. Number one, I came to the board here about two years ago asking about, does the town have an emergency evacuation plan? Still, one hasn't been posted and I think it's even more important to have one with all the approval of development going on the east and west side of Highway 25 without the proper infrastructure that's needed. Number two, three months ago, I came to the board and I asked, I had several questions. One was about the scrub overgrowth around surrounding Promontory Point, the east of it. Town of Monument owns that. It's actually, if you can go to the new website that town just posted and the parcel lots, click on that, it will show Town of Monument owns it. Haven't got a response back as to where we're at. That's a significant fire issue. Lastly, asked about the definition of an access road that connects Promontory Point with Sanctuary Point. Haven't heard what that definition is that was in place. We did a traffic study through Tribe View. It was presented to the town back in March of 2018, I'm sorry, June of 2018 with recommendations to have another traffic study done once that road, that access road was connected because of the additional traffic. Also, according to Ordinance 16.04 general provisions, the street, the term street, and supposed to be developed standard roadway design accordance with El Paso County, which it is not. Again, with the Ordinance 16.48, 16.48.010 and 020, roads and streets shall comply with the payment design criteria. This doesn't include heavy trucks, two axles, six truck or larger, meaning construction vehicles that go in and up, in and out of that. I've had one of the Board of Trustees, which I appreciate, come and take a look at these items, saw firsthand that there's no speed sign for 1.5 miles in either direction. Constant speeding up and down. School's about to start. Nine bus stops on Glen Eagle. Additional traffic. And with, with coming up with Home Place Ranch, the need to extend Glen Eagle to Higbee, this goes into additional Town Ordinance 16.40.010 design principles. There shall be at least two points of access for all subdivisions with more than 25 single-family dwelling units in the subdivision. Promontory Point does not. I urge that the town take up to do a traffic study, to use the one that we used from Colorado Springs and not listen to the developer who does a traffic assessment that's different. But I think that's needed to be done for resolution on how to resolve the traffic on Glen Eagle with that access road that does not have any curbs, any street markings, no speed signs, no lighting. It is dangerous. It is hazardous. School is about to start. Accidents have occurred. We're trying to, we bring, we've been bringing this up to the board since 2017. Our concerns. We would like an answer for our community. And to answer the questions that have been asked. So I urge you to, to take up that resolution or just pass. Again, if you need the old traffic study report that was done before the access road was initiated, I have a copy of that, but that was sent to the town back in June of 2018. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to make public comment this evening? Mr. Anders, sir?
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, trustees.
Your name, sir?
Jeremy Harrigan.
Okay.
I have always believed that Resolution 08-2021 that the board passed in January of this year was a very good start for the town to try to protect our businesses from the government overreach, from the governor, from, you know, the lockdowns that we had. Know that the town is proud of it. Know that the town is proud of it. None of you are proud of it. It's almost unprecedented for a town. You know, to have passed something like that, even when the county didn't have their act together. I I recognize that. But there's one, every time I go back and read this, there's one sentence in here that has always concerns me and it's this, I'll read it. The board therefore calls on each business and individual to determine for themselves the level to which they desire to comply in their best interest with the governor's unconstitutional orders. My translation of that is is that part of it, you know, monument business owners, we love you, we need you, we hope you make it. But you know what? We give you permission to decide for yourself, if you're a restaurant, what measures you think you need to to make it. So if the governor says you can only do twenty five percent seating capacity, but you know you need seventy five percent to make it this time, that's your call. And we're telling you as the town, you know, that that's your call. I mean, it's your business. But if the county or public health department pays you a visit to shut you down because you go with some more, you choose what measures you want. Sorry, we can't help you. You're on your own at that point. Can you imagine how so many business owners felt, maybe still feel, probably will feel again? We could be weeks, few months away from another round of serious lockdowns in our towns, businesses, our restaurants, they, if they barely made it last year, they won't be able to survive it again. I'm sure they thought to themselves, gee, thanks a lot for the kind words, Monument Board, but that's not going to stop the county or public health, county public health department from coming in here and shutting me down. We need a stronger resolution to protect this stuff. This was a good start. We need a stronger resolution. I urge you to call a special meeting to discuss this further. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, do we have any comments online? Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment? Okay, seeing none, the public comment period is over for this meeting. Board authorization items, town staff, you have none? Okay. Does any board member have a board authorization item?
I'd like to know what the board might think about our town staff implementing whatever is most appropriate to protect the names of our streets, protect our name, the names of our parks, so that somebody does not come along and decide to change Washington or Jefferson Street to who knows what. I'd like to know what the board thinks about that.
I would think we would direct town staff to present us with some sort of, is there, is there a way to protect in a sense town history and town monuments in that fashion?
Definitely will do some research because that's new to me. I don't think we've ever had to do that before. So we'll definitely do some research and report back to the board. Would you like that at the next meeting?
The next meeting or the meeting after?
Sure, either one.
Whichever is more appropriate. And I understand your comment, Mayor Protem. We know that a lot of that stuff has been changed in other communities. They're removed or, and we would like to protect those items.
I agree with that.
So boards and agreements?
Yes.
Any other board authorization items for many members for future meetings? Okay, seeing none, that takes us to a discussion item. Trustee Stevens, do you want to kick us off on that? That was your item for comprehensive plan discussion.
Yes, on the comprehensive plan, in in the situation going on in Old Denver Highway and also the situation that happened a couple of months early, a while earlier where we were doing some development or approving development in the Jackson Creek area. It's becoming glaringly apparent that the expectation of the community is very different from what we have in our ordinances and versus the comprehensive plan. So what I'd like to propose is that we have the planning commission to do a review of our comprehensive plan and see how it matches up with the actual ordinances. So that way we can, so what is actually being done in in our what is expected or what the developers come in and they read the ordinances and say, this is what's being required of me and this is what I have to do. That it matches the comprehensive plan, which should match the expectation of the people of the town of Monument. And so I would like to see, so my, my, what I wanted to propose is that we have some type of a review of the comprehensive plan and hopefully we get as much participation as we had earlier in the planning commission in order to, in order to review everything and then make proposals to the board as to how the ordinances should look and what people would prefer to see and what the preference there is and how they would like to see the town. Because until some issue comes up that that shocks and horrifies everybody, then we don't really get to hear. We have, you know, we we pass ordinances and is, are there any comments and and crickets chirp. And so I think it would be a good idea if we did some type of a review and maybe announce it when everybody else will be at the meeting.
So how how much of the recent update to our town code? Did that mirror the comprehensive plan?
So I'm, I'm going to take this one and Mike can certainly chime in. The typical planning process is you, a town updates their comprehensive plan based on the visions, the goals. What does the town want to look like? And then the actual review of that is the code update. So the town actually completed that process correctly. You adopted a comprehensive plan and then a year or two later followed up and found money to completely rewrite the town zoning code. And that consultant evaluated the town comprehensive plan and put new zones, new uses and definitions, design standards in place that reflected that comprehensive plan. So from a, from a perspective, from a planning perspective, I'm not sure what another review would look like. We do have documentation from that consultant that I have seen and reviewed that states that they made the changes to the town code based on that comprehensive plan and some documentation on you know, where those changes occurred based on that plan. I'm not sure what else staff could do. I guess I don't know if Mike, you probably know more than me. I'm just coming from a perspective of reading the comprehensive plan, looking at that background material and then seeing the updated code and following through with that process.
Totally agree. And as late as today, we consulted with our consultant that we used on a project that we're working on today to ensure that not only did it, you know, go with our ordinances that we just in codes that we just passed, but also how it complied with our comprehensive plan. And so Mr. Ritchie met with our, our consultant on that and got a report back from him today. So.
So I mean, I understand where everybody's coming from as far as we've worked very hard on all these things and we've done this. But yet, next meeting, if I said, who wants Old Denver Highway area to be light industrial and put up warehouses, I guarantee you everyone's going to raise their hand and say, no way. And so somehow we missed, you know, there's a miscommunication going on that our, our comprehensive plan and our ordinances don't seem to be reflecting what the, what the people want. I mean, maybe, I don't know what the good solution is there.
So I have a couple of comments on that. You know, some of those processes are extremely long and were approved. And now a lot of people feel like they're just hearing about it, which is understandable and that creates frustration. But also, as we attempt to move home rule, what opportunity does home rule give us to to cater to some of these needs?
Home rule will allow you to make some changes that might be able to do this, but you have to remember about the zoning process. This, this property that everybody's concerned about has been zoned for years. It was rezoned a couple of years ago. And so the comprehensive plan was considered when it was rezoned and you have to remember it was downzoned. It was heavy industrial, heavy industrial prior to the new zoning of light industrial. And so that's when the time was, when they came to you and wanted to downgrade, downzone the zoning, that's the time that we should have been having these discussions at that time. And so now that opportunity is kind of left. And so you have to look at other land and other things, just like, you know, the Doug's Temple just left. Remember, that was light and I think light industrial, heavy industrial prior to, and they, they agreed to downzone that to single family. And a lot of the people around that area came to this meeting and were very against us putting single family there. They wanted it to stay the same. Now, when we told them that you could have a Home Depot or a Lowe's in your backyard, they kind of decided they wanted single family there. And I think the board agreed with them. So you have that opportunity to do that during these rezoning. But also you got to remember when you're, when a developer comes to you and offers rezoning, he doesn't have to agree to rezone if you put too many stipulations on him. So if you say, hey, we want you to go from heavy industrial to single family, but he wants to go to light industrial and you stick to, you're going to go single family, well, he might say, I'm done. I'm going to stay heavy industrial. So he already has that ability to build in that zone.
So I've mentioned this before, if an ordinance continues to raise concern for our community, the planning commission, commission already has the ability to make make recommendations to us to change an ordinance, correct?
Absolutely, as well as town, town staff would say something's not working. But I quite frankly, don't know what's working or what wouldn't be working because the town code, the new code was just implemented on July sixteenth. So we have not taken in any applications or maybe one application under the new code since the sixteenth of July. Anything that we're reviewing that was submitted prior to July sixteenth is coming to you underneath that former zoning and subdivision code. I think what staff is going to do as we work through the new code, we're definitely going to make notes of what is working and maybe what's not working, what needs to be refined. A lot of times when you implement a new code, we're not going to really know if it's going to work until we have a chance to try it out in a real world scenario. And I really don't think we've had the opportunity to do that yet in the last three to four weeks. So I think one thing as Debbie and I walk through reviewing applications, we would definitely bring suggestions and recommendations on specific areas of the code that would need to be amended. And yes, you can amend certain areas of that when we can bring to you a problem that that needs a solution. I I would say I don't know if we're there yet because I'd like to review a few applications under the new code first to determine if it's, if it's meeting, if it's meeting those expectations or not. And as I said, we haven't had a lot of chance to do that yet.
So just to, just to give an example of what I'm talking about is we often hear, and luckily we've had some of our new developments work with us, but we often hear that the ninety foot height limit is too much. And I don't know what our new code says, but there's no reason that the planning commission couldn't say, hey, board of trustees, can you look at changing this to seventy five feet?
And they did, they did that exact same thing.
They did for that specific project.
No, they did that for the whole entire east side of I twenty five. They lowered the height limitations to fifty feet, I think, on that side. But you got to remember, the landowners who were vested under the old code still have the ability to build as long as they, I think they had to have a sketch plan in. Is that right? Prior to the change.
Yeah, I believe so. Yes.
So they had to have a sketch plan prior to the change. If they had that sketch plan in, they were vested.
So, so you're saying that is changed just in one development now or or is that with the new ordinance?
So the new ordinance changed. It's still ninety feet on the west side of I twenty five.
So, okay. So in my example, the planning commission could say that's too much for the west side. Any future development on the west side needs to be below this.
You could. But once again, anybody that's vested under that would still get to go under the old code.
Okay.
If they submitted a plan.
A sketch plan, yes.
And just for my frame of reference, how many stories is ninety feet worth?
Probably around eight, seven or eight.
Seven or eight. About fifteen foot a story. Twelve fifteen.
Is, so I'm not against, and sorry, Ron, I kind of took over. I'm not against us having the planning commission look for any concerns they have. I don't know that we would necessarily be successful with an all out review.
Well, again, I was just wanting to find some, you know, an opportunity where people could give their feedback since there's a lot of interest today and there will be next week. So we haven't been able to get as much feedback as we would like. And anyway, I would like to extend that information to the board, to the planning commission for them to understand if they feel something is out of whack and is not consistent with the with the with the community that they can recommend to us those kind of changes. And we would gladly you know, listen to those. I think that would be a good approach to move forward. I understand we just did a massive review, but evidently obviously some people were not there participating as they, as we would like. Thank you.
Okay. So any other, any other comp plan discussion items, anyone? Seeing none, we'll move to board of trustee comments. Any comments from the board of trustees?
I have a comment just here, I think I made you, but due to recent changes for my husband's career, just things going on. We are going to be stationed in Germany here shortly. And then in light of my limit with just because of my family at home, I was able to come tonight, but my limit to remote access. To be pushing this position. So I don't know how that procedure works.
Okay.
Does it happen there? But.
Ms. Hogan, is there any official procedure for a board member resigning their seat?
Well, that question might be better directed to Mr. Ritchie. But I believe at some point there would need to be an official resignation and I've seen in the past it done via resolution of the board of trustees. Declaring a vacancy.
If you give me the details for when you want that to take, to take place, we'll work that issue for you all.
How much time before you need to leave?
December is when we'll moving, but I'm already at my limit voting on cause of judicial matters on remote, so. Those issues back.
Okay. So my question was, was there anything she specifically has to do aside from the board declaring a vacancy?
I think the first step will be for her to give us official notification that she is resigning her seat and then we'll take that forward to the board for a resolution to accept that.
Okay. So would you like to declare this your official notice?
Unfortunately, I'll have to. I have no just to attend the next meeting.
Okay. So.
Do you need that written? Is it, I mean?
No, it's on the record.
We'll, we'll move forward with the resolution.
So you'll be, bring back a resolution of the board declaring a vacancy?
That is correct.
And Ms. Hogan, you have a questionnaire for applicants that we've previously used?
Yeah, the board came up with one last time there was a vacancy and I have a, a copy of that.
Would you send that to the board so they can review it? I believe it went kind of above and beyond in some of the questions and I would like these board members to see it because I believe it was developed prior to this board.
Yes, I'll send that up.
Okay. Trustee Enru, we're very sorry to hear that. Those of us who have been in the military know how it works. So we have had board members in the past leave due to military service. And we thank you for your service and we do hope to see you before you leave. Any other board comments?
Sorry to see you go.
Sorry to see you go.
I'm sorry to go.
Okay, if there's no other comments, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. All in favor? We are adjourned.